Good evening, we're opening the meeting of the Fall River Planning Board. Today is Monday, February 24, 5:30 PM. And, I will read, "At pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible." And this evening, we'd like to welcome our two new members of the board, Gloria Pacheco and John Ferreira. And now we will have a roll call. Beth Andre?
Yes.
Mario Luciano.
Yes.
Gloria Pacheco. And John Ferreira. I'm Cynthia Sevicki, President. And?
William Roth, Planning Director. And Patty Aguiar, Recording Secretary. And Fall River Government Access TV is Alex Mello.
Okay.
Here we go. This is a continued, number 01, Madam Chairperson, is a Form C definitive subdivision by Draper Street Realty Trust, Globe Mills, App, and Draper Street. It was tabled from the January 20th, I'm sorry, January 13, 2020 meeting requested. There was no public testimony taken, therefore, our two new members, everyone's hearing this for the first time, so it's a full-member board. And it's a request for a proposed four-lot subdivision, lot sizes between 5,557 plus or minus square feet to 6,678 square feet. The applicant proposes, initially it was nine waivers, but they've pulled two of those back since then. So they're proposing seven waivers. One is the cost estimate requirement, one is to the construction activity sequencing, the environmental impact evaluation requirement, one is to reduce the curb radius, number five is to reduce the right-of-way width from 50 to 40, number six is to reduce the travel way from 26 feet to 22 feet, and number seven would be the turnaround radius of 45 feet with a pavement with a 26 feet, to a proposed 30-foot radius with 22 feet of pavement. The property is zoned waterfront transit-oriented development, and with that, the applicant is here to go over everything.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Alex Gordetsky, I'm representing Mr. Almeida, who is the owner of this property, and for your consideration, it's a four-lot residential subdivision. It could be probably of value if I describe the short history of this project. This project has been going on for about, I believe, 15 years. Originally, it was approved as a 36-7 condominium development, which was in the areas of economy. The project was proposed, changed hands several times, so in about, I believe, 2015, the owners applied for the zoning variance, which allowed the reduction of the frontage and areas of the lots. For your consideration, definitive plan was prepared, submitted, and approved by the planning board, as shown here. However, the owners didn't proceed with the construction, so the variance expired, so for your consideration, it's probably the bestest and the bestest version of this project. I received, we received a few comments from the planning board, from the planning director, Mr. Roth, from the engineering department, so most of the comments I addressed, I believe there were some other comments, there were a few reviews that I received from the sewer department after we received a letter, and they require some revisions as far as drainage is concerned. Mr. Roth advised me that it would be appropriate if I address these comments at the signing, at the endorsement process, and again, the project, the way the project looks itself. That's a four-lot development. It was a four-house block, the entrance into the project is from the great ravine, approximately across from the entrance into the new high school, into the new school, the Cut School. And the project proposal water is 140 feet. There was some, as a part of previous development, some infrastructure has been already put inside, there is a sewer, sewer line connection, and part of the drainage has been rebuilt, so this project is utilizing existing sewer and drainage, except that, as was requested by the sewer department, part of the sewer is being reconfigured. And that's very short and brief review of the project, if you have any questions, I'll get the answer.
Do we have any questions from the board?
No, yeah.
Not yet. Have all of the questions from this meeting been addressed?
Yes, and there's a memo that I wrote on the 20th to the planning board.
Yes.
And I kind of, kind of went over, we've gone back and forth on, on some of the engineering review. I've outlined the waiver request, and the, between staff and city engineer and community utilities, the seven requests, staff did not have any issues with as proposed. Request number eight, to no sidewalks and the underground utilities, has been removed, so they've withdrawn that, so they're going to be putting a sidewalk in on one side, and they're going to be doing underground utilities. I believe that, should the board decide to recommend approval, I have a recommended set of conditions that address everything. The first condition is, obviously, it approves the waivers, and then there are, there were several, I consider more minor revisions that community utilities wanted. So, conditions number two, three, four, five, and six, and seven, and eight, all deal with revising the drainage or the water and sewer plans, and some of them are simple that, you know, they need to revise it to show the water main as a six-inch ductal iron pipe, very minimal things. And then, one of the issues that we had in the review was a, along the south side, there's a riprap, and we wanted to look at having him, having the applicant spread that out a little bit and provide a better detail, and so condition number nine requires that. And, and then, condition number 10, and so the conditions two through 10 are prior to endorsement, so when they want to come get the Mylar endorsed from you, they're gonna, prior to that, he needs to submit the revised engineering plans, community utilities, planning, and engineering will then sign off, and then tell you that the revised engineering plans are sufficient. The remaining conditions are what I consider, and the way I've kind of always professionally done it, is more of a step-by-step for how the applicant needs to, some of it is just code requirement, but it's actually just to have it all in one place, such as, you know, that site plan review is going to be required, you know, installing street trees, installing the streetlights meeting our requirements, the post-development runoff needs to meet the grading plans. These are just things that, you know, basic things, monuments being installed, requirement, a detailed requirement for the third-party inspection and the payment, and about recording the plan and providing a performance bond. So, the remaining conditions are pretty much the step-by-step, and it's kind of how I've always done it, and it makes it very clear, so when somebody pulls the file, they can look at it and they go, oh, I need to do A, B, C, and D. So, it's more of the, I find it to be beneficial in a roadmap. So, with that, I'm recommending approval, subject to the 24 conditions identified in my May, in my February 20th memo.
Do any board members have any questions?
I don't know.
That's a different sheet than I have.
Well, if you see the one I have there.
Alex, the sidewalk was highlighted, aren't you?
Page three of three.
Oh, Mr. Gordetsky's, three of three. Oh, that is, number, that number two, that's about the, that's identified in the condition, condition number four, the, about the proposed sewer to the existing manhole number three from number four. It's below the invert elevation, and that condition's unacceptable, and they need to revise that. So, that's how we would address that.
So, what happened, if I can address it, we double-checked the invert, we measured it and inserted it, I think I, you have a memo for that. It missed the requirements. We double-checked the elevation, I guess when it was initially measured, wasn't measured that accurately, so we double-checked it, and it was more accurate.
Any doubts, Mario?
I'm, I'm fine, I'm fine, everything was explained pretty well. The only one that was concerned, and that again, you know, is the sidewalk, and the wave, so, but the sidewalk's been withdrawn, and the other, the item nine is also been withdrawn. The paper that, as we see, this one, so I'm satisfied with it.
Sidewalk is shown.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Is anyone here to speak on this item? No one here? Do I have a motion? Motion to accept?
Motion, I, if you're saying that, I would say, motion to approve the subdivision, subject to the 24 conditions identified in the February 20th memo.
And second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very much.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Roth. And tabled from the January 13th meeting also, was the street acceptance, Small Street.
So, the city engineer talked about Stanley Street and Small Street, and I wasn't, and I was a little confused, so I've met with him, and essentially, what he's done is, I've kind of highlighted Small Street. I'm just looking at, Small Street is the one that kind of runs north-south, and his issue is, is that Stanley Street does not run, does not run this to the north, to the west, because there's a school there, and there's no area for a proper turnaround if he were to construct the street. So, he would really, he is requesting that you recommend accepting Small Street and the 280-foot portion of Stanley Street between Small and Damon Street, so he could have a proper, so if, in the future, they can redo the street, that they can come up and then around and make the proper turnaround. So, the recommendation would be to, to revise the request to accept Small Street and the 280 feet of Stanley Street between Small and Damon Street.
And I say that the estimated cost for this is $83,000?
Yes, and that would have to, as any street acceptance, it would be, it would go and have to compete with any and all other road projects in the city.
Okay. Any questions on this item?
Now, this is an old street, though, how come it took so long to get approved?
Uh, there's, there's.
Probably street acceptance or after.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of streets that aren't accepted in the city.
Construction for this?
Yes, a lot of them. We don't maintain them, or a lot of times, actually, there's a lot of them that, you know, get plowed and whatnot, because you don't know, you know, if it's accepted or not accepted.
This one's been dug up a few times.
Yep. So, so the recommendation would be to accept Small Street and that portion of Stanley Street between Small and Damon.
And Damon. Anyone here for this item? No? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept this.
To recommend to the city council.
Recommend, is it city council, correct?
Yes, to recommend to city council.
The Small and what's Stanley Street.
The 280-foot portion of Stanley between Small and Damon.
Yep.
Okay.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. And now we have item number one on the agenda, repetitive petition, owner applicant, Frederick Humes, Jr., and Faith Lattessa, 3671 North Main Street, assesses math X-5-35.
And I'll go ahead and read it for you. Request submitted by SciTech Engineering on behalf of Frederick Humes, Jr., and Faith Lattessa, under Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 16, and under Section 86, 487 of the zoning ordinance, actually, I should say ordinance, not bylaw, of the zoning bylaw, with respect to a special permit request, which was denied by the Zoning Board of Appeals on November 21, 2019, to convert the Flower Garden Center Retail Nursery into a dispatching transportation business with retail-related uses of non-public auto repair and auto sales for onsite business purposes in the single-family residential district. The current request is for a determination by the planning board that the applicant's new proposal, a salon and spa, reflects specific and material changes in conditions upon which the denial was issued, and for consent from the planning board to allow a new hearing by the Zoning Board of Appeals prior to the expiration of the two years after the dated denial. Please note that this requires a nine-tenths vote, so essentially, a majority of the planning board. And essentially, what this is, is when a application, either a variance or special permit, is denied by the Zoning Board of Appeals, there's a two-year time period. It's in order to, so people just don't keep on trying requests and wearing the board down and the neighbors and everything. The only exception is if there is a, if it is a repetitive petition, which they're applying for, and it's something that is materially changed and different from the original request. And so, as you can see, there was a dispatched transportation business, auto repair, and now, they want a new, they, they're seeking a new use of a salon and a spa, and I'll let Mr. Aguiar go ahead and explain his thing.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Dan Aguiar, I'm a senior project manager at SciTech Engineering, that addresses in the city, Dartmouth and Marshfield. As Mr. Roth stated, this is a repetitive petition request, just a couple of housekeeping items, I don't think it makes a difference. It was advertised, and it was read into the record as being filed on behalf of Humes and Lattessa. They were the applicants on the denied application. This is being brought forward under the owner's name.
Okay.
So, if you look at a plan, it would be Michael Olowski, who is the owner of the property, not that it matters, because.
We're just clarifying, that's a script error.
It was his name, Michael? Yep, it's on the plan. O-R-L-O-W-S-K-I, they were the, they are the owners of the property even still, so even under the previous zoning application.
Right.
They were part of the application because they, they did own the property.
Okay.
And again, as, as Bill stated, the previous application, when I was here for the meeting, I did not represent the developer at the time, and this plan is in your package as well, along with my cover letter. This is the subject parcel that sits on North Main Street, just north of Mallard Street. You all know it as that nursery that's off onto your right that sits up a little bit high, as you're heading northerly on, on North Main Street. So, the original petition was to utilize the existing structure and create a parking facility in the front, and then a vehicle storage area to the rear, where they were going to be dispatching vehicles like, as a taxi service, any hour of the day, whether it was Uber, or I don't know which mechanism it was going to be, but that was going to be the primary use of the property, as a home for vehicles like taxis to be dispatched out of the property. On top of that, they were asking at some point to allow an auto sales license to take place on the property as well. So, the development of the piece at that time would have required quite a bit of new asphalt, the building wouldn't have changed much, just some modifications. So, what's actually getting put on the ground isn't that drastically different, it's more the use that is different, and that's what this board needs to determine. So, again, our proposed use and the amount of parking spaces that we need for employees and for guests, we've got that requirement showing this on this plan, and the proposed salon will be contained within the existing building itself. I do have an aerial photograph, just so you can get an idea of what's out there now. You guys can just pass that now. So, again, as Bill stated, you're not approving this project in any form or fashion, you're not saying it's a good idea, you're not saying they can open up tomorrow. All you need to do is determine whether or not this proposal is different enough from the first proposal that was denied with the Zoning Board of Appeals. So, in the cover letter, and I'm not going to read you my entire cover letter, I'm going to just, just read you a couple of sentences. The applicant had previously been denied a special permit request to change the existing non-conforming nursery use of the property into a motor vehicle dispatch facility with onsite auto repair and sales. A copy of the submitted petition, plan, and decision is enclosed. The proposed petition would still require a special permit from the City of Fall River Zoning Board of Appeals, and would request permission to change the existing non-conforming use into a salon/spa with approximately 13 employees, at different times of the day. As illustrated on the attached plan, the proposed use of the property is drastically different than previously petitioned. The proposed use would maintain regular business hours, seven days a week, 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM, would not allow the storage of vehicles after hours, would not allow for repair/sales of motor vehicles, and would not create a nuisance during evening and nighttime hours. It is our opinion that these proposed specific and material changes warrant the ability to appear before the Zoning Board of Appeals for the purpose of rehearing the petition. So, it's, they're pretty simple, we have an existing, pre-existing non-conforming commercial use of the property, which is a nursery, this is what they would like to do, the salon and spa, and you just need to determine whether or not this new use is substantially different from the previous that got denied. That's all. If you have any specific questions regarding that, we can get into it as deeply as we need to, or that you would like to, but the actual project itself isn't really before the board.
No, I see substantial changes from the previous to the present one right now, so I make motion to approve.
Is anyone here for this item? No? Any questions from our board? We have a motion to approve?
I made a motion to approve.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Have a good night.
You too.
You can keep it for the record.
Oh, yes, we need it. As soon as he handles it.
It's part of the record. It's nice to see two new members on the board.
Thank you.
Okay, and we have made our two. Item number two, zoning ordinance, Chapter 86 Amendment.
Okay. The City of Fall River proposes a recodification of zoning ordinance, Chapter 86. The recodification resulted in changes to the numbering and the layout of the previously approved zoning ordinance. However, no changes to text of the ordinance were proposed. A copy of the re, of the modified, re, of the remodified version of the ordinance is available, per public view, at the city clerk's office and at the planning department. And I have, and with you, I've, I think we've given to you, the new zoning ordinance, I have the old one, and some of the numbering and lettering, and it's like, and especially when people cite a code section, whatever, 86, 487, subsection D, it may now be subsection C, or, you know, so that's, no, no actual bylaw or ordinance language was changed, it's strictly, we, the city hired a company called General Code, and they specialize in, in looking at recodifications. So, and what had happened is, is that city council actually approved this late in 2018, and then we just started getting the new books, and we realized that, under Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, which is the zoning or enabling legislation, the planning board needs to advertise and hold a public hearing, take public comment, and then they need to, you know, approve and recommend to city council for approval. So, we just kind of inadvertently, they, they missed the step for the planning board, so this is more of a housecleaning issue, in that my recommendation is to, is to recommend approval of the codification, then public, then a public hearing will be held by the city council, they approve it, and then, then we take it, and then send it off to the land court for, so they can have a copy of it, and then we'll, we'll be fine, and then this will be the accepted official version.
So, now, none of the verbiage has changed?
No text has changed, it's literally, you know, it's literally the layout and some of the numbering systems that they've used. Like, sometimes it went, the old bylaw would go, it would do a section for something, and then it would go A, B, and C, and then, and other places in the code, it would go section, you know, 86, 275, 1, 2, and 3. Well, there's a hierarchy, you do the number, and then the next one down is A, B, and C, and then if you do an end-in again, then it goes to numbers and letters, and there's a, there's a certain hierarchy, and the original version had inconsistencies. So, this, this puts it in proper code format.
Kind of clarification.
It's just format only, no, they, nothing has changed in the text whatsoever.
Any comments? No comments?
No.
And, and so now, we accept it?
I make, somebody needs to make a motion to, to approve the recodification and to send it to city council for final approval.
Make a motion that we accept the recodification and send the city council for approval.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
And number three, appoint a planning board member to the Community Percipation Committee.
Yes, I, we put this on waiting for a full board. Every year, well, the previous member was Mr. Manese, who served for many years, and so now that we have a full board, if there's a person, I believe, you were interested.
Interested.
So.
That's very good.
Yeah, I know.
All right.
I make motion to appoint John.
Now, all in favor? Aye.
All in favor.
Yes.
I will forward that on to city council. I will forward that on to City Council for final approval.
John, just point of information, I was there for two years, it was a lot of fun.
Lot of fun.
I believe you.
He's looking forward to it.
Well, I was on the, I was on Sherford, and when I, I was on the Planning Board in Somerset for 10 years, and I was a Sherford representative there, and a few others. The subboards are fun.
All right, very good. And we have item number four, Form A's, application for endorsement of plan believed not to require approval. And A is file number 20-1452, owner applicant J. N. K. Realty LLC, location at 1168 Highland Avenue, assesses map, map S-3, lots 2 and 25.
This is the old, was the home for the agent up on Highland Avenue?
Oh.
And what is being proposed are, one, two, three, four, single-family building lots, and then there are a fifth lot. Do you have, it's-
1452. So 1452 at the bottom?
1452.
Yep, this is it, I have it.
Yep, 1452. The zoning district requires 100 feet of frontage and 12,000 square feet for lot area. Lots A, B, C, and D, all, and E, all five lots meet the requirement. And I know what they're looking at doing is, they're going to be coming in, I know to the Zoning Board of Appeals on the home for a conversion to a multifamily or apartments or condos, I'm not sure, that doesn't really matter. But they're looking at doing the four single-family lots, and then the larger lot for the redevelopment. So Adams Street and Highland Avenue are both constructed ways and are accessible, and it, and also Langley. So the lots meet the minimum frontage of 100 feet of frontage and a minimum of 12,000 square feet. So I'm recommending that it is not a subdivision, and it meets the approval not required in the zoning ordinance.
And do I have a motion?
Motion to accept the plan, who not acquired by J. N. K. Realty LLC.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And item number B, file number 20-1453, owner applicant Joan Seer, William Seer, POA, location 226 and 236 at Landtick Boulevard, assesses map A-15, lots 36 and 37.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The proposal received a variance in November of 2019, and the, these are two existing properties, and that they are looking at adjusting the property line. If you see the old lot line, the single-family home on, on A-1537 crosses into 36, so they are trying, they're adjusting the property line-
Yes.
-in the back to, to put each single-family dwelling on their own lots. I'm recommending endorsement. This is, this is literally the same plan that the Zoning Board of Appeals proved the variance for.
Any questions? And do I have a motion to, a motion to approve? Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item C, file number 20-1454.
Do the next one in the back.
Owner- 54. Owner applicant, owner, master builders ministries, location 371, 397 Bay Street, assesses map H-21, lots 7 and 8.
This is on-
It's 1454 on the bottom.
1454.
1454.
They were all in order.
They were all in order.
They were.
Yeah.
I have it open. I have 1452, 1453, 1455.
I have 1454, excuse me.
Next time I'm going to leave the mine home, just four floors.
Yeah. Too much paper, yeah.
Okay, 1454, go.
This is to reestablish a property line between the two existing buildings. When they were bought, they were merged together. So it meets the frontage requirement, and so this is pretty straightforward to put the, the two buildings on separate lots. I think when they purchased it, they got rid of the property line because they were going to build a connection between the buildings, and now that they are moving to a new location, they're not building that connection, and they want to look at selling the buildings independently. So this is to reestablish the property line that was removed several years ago.
Any questions from the board? No? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve, I submit.
Second?
I'll second.
All in, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And item number D, file number 20-1455.
Right here.
Owner applicant, Dream Homes LLC, location St. Joseph Street and Bagdad Street, assesses map J-17, lots 3 and 15.
Our new member, Mrs. Pacheco, I believe, will be abstaining from this, so she will not participate in, in this. She, this is a family member of hers that is doing this. So this received variance approval for the, this is the church and the rectory, and then the old, the parking lot across the street. They received variance to create the, the six subdivision lots. They are going to also take the, the large lot with the church, create the church on a separate parcel, and then you have parcels A and B with a driveway easement coming to, between them. Those are the two existing, I think the rectory and the, oh, I don't know what the other, the, two, two of the church buildings, and then there's the main sanctuary. So in the end, this plan separates lot A, that will be a separate development in the future. Lot B is going to be renovated and some multifamily. They need a joint driveway easement between them. Lot C has access to numerous areas, and then they have these six single-family lots that are on the south. This did receive a variance for frontage area and lot size. So therefore, it meets the approval for endorsement.
Any questions? No?
So just for clarity, okay, we're approving lot A, B, C, and the six-
A, B, A, B, C.
And the six of the house lots.
Lots four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine, yes.
Right. Is this one, I'm, I mean, Eastern Avenue?
Yeah.
By the pool.
Notre Dame?
The old Notre Dame.
I make motion to approve if that's correct. Is that correct?
Yes.
I second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And it's noted-
Any more maps? No more maps, I hope?
No more, no more maps. And it's noted that Gloria Pacheco abstains that item.
Yep.
And-
The newbies had no problems.
Sorry, good luck.
All right. And so I see we have a listing, proposal for scheduled meeting dates for 2020.
Yes, Madam Chairman. I, when I got here, I've been here two years, and it's been such a juggle. All the other boards have a standard meeting. Where I've worked before, we had a standard meeting. It would be beneficial because it's easier for applicants to know when they need to submit. We don't have to call you and try, you know, it was hard enough to try to arrange a meeting with three of you, now it's five of you. So we kind of did take a poll about, you know, dates. We are recommending that the, and looking at the overall city calendar, we would recommend that the second Monday of every month, other than where it's denoted on in September, Oct, and October, I'm sorry, the third Monday.
This is third Monday due to the holiday, so other than that, it's the second Monday of everyone.
Correct, other than, other than September and October, because there are two holidays there.
Okay.
That it would be the second Monday of the month. And this way, it can be on everyone's calendar, and like, I highly, unless we get something, a Form A in in the next week, we'll probably call you up and cancel the March 9th meeting because we'll have nothing. But at least we now will have it published, here are our meeting dates going forward, and then it will better help us plan and regulate when applications can get in and when we can get them on the agenda.
Okay.
So.
Is that good with everyone?
Yeah, I believe in April 25th for Spain.
So on April 13th will be good for you?
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Yeah, did you get a list?
I think we, I think we make this the previous one.
Huh? What? Huh?
I'm glad you did.
Okay, so April 13th would be good for you.
And, and mind you, not everyone's going to make these.
Right.
I mean, I might not even make one of these every now and then, but at least we know what the dates are moving forward.
Who buy us?
From now on, we're only going to have one packet for Elizabeth and Beth, and Beth is just going to hand them to Mario.
I told her we'd just share.
So just for point of information, I travel a lot, okay? Somebody's going to do a cross, a sacrifice. So, and the other one is in November, going to Israel.
November 9th?
I can't go to Italy right now, I just, trouble this morning.
Yeah. So this is what I would recommend, if you want to vote on it, then we can publish it and set it up on the calendar.
Okay, I'll make a motion on that one, see that I cause all that problem.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
By the way, John, Gloria, welcome.
They're going to run away now.
Oh, they're good.
Item number six is approval of the minutes of January 13th.
And that will be only the three voting.
Only as three, right here.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The three of us. And no one is here for public input, and so now a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.